Meeting to order tonight. Good to see everybody. Glad everybody's here and glad everybody's safe. Let's go ahead and stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gill, do you mind leading us in our prayer tonight?
Dear Lord, thank you for this time that we've all come together, Lord. Thank you for the businesses being done tonight, Lord. Thank you for the wonderful children that we serve, Lord. And thank you for this weather that's coming in tonight, Lord. And thankful for the holiday that's been provided. In it's your name we pray, amen.
Y'all go ahead and take a look at the agenda tonight. For you, it's pretty simple tonight. You go ahead and take a look at that. And then whenever y'all ready, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. Mr. Gene just makes a motion to approve the agenda. We have a second. Second by Mr. Dwayne, Mr. Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion being approved or the agenda being approved? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? Anything we need to add? No additions to the agenda? All right, well with that, Dr. Byrd, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Sathy Zee is not able to be here today. So they said next month they'll have two substitutes of the month. So we're gonna go move right along. I would like to start with our American Fidelity Teacher of the Month. This month, we have Ms. Melissa Wilson from Brighton High School. Ms. Wilson, if you'll come up. Her principal's here. So I'm going to share all of the nice things that her principal said about her. You know, I'm named her her teacher. I promise it's all good. She has been at Brighton High School. She teaches ACT prep for twenty, he put twenty plus years. Ms. Wilson has been consistently a level four or five teacher. She is a big reason why Brighton High School has been a level five school for ACT composite growth. Ms. Wilson is able to build relationships with her students, which allows her to motivate them to perform above prediction on their ACT scores. Ms. Wilson's teaching styles are able to help students with a variety of learning abilities. Ms. Wilson is a mentor to many of our math teachers. She gives her time after school and on weekends to hold tutoring sessions. That is true. To help prepare students for the ACT test. Ms. Wilson plays an important part in our student success and the positive culture in our school. So congratulations to Ms. Melissa.
I do want to say that Ms. Melissa is the reason that both of my children did as well as they did on the ACT. Just throw that out there.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Carlson, you get a picture and text it to me.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, now moving to our Students of the Month. We're going to start with our Elementary Student of the Month. So representing elementary school, we have Madison Taylor. So Madison will come up and her principal is here, Ms. Johnson. And these are all of the things that Madison does so well in. And this is why she was Student of the Month. Cooperation and work ethic, leadership, considerate to others, assist others in need, outstanding attitude, outstanding grades. And she is a positive role model for other students. It is our pleasure, these are Ms. Johnson and her teachers' words. It is our pleasure to nominate Madison Taylor. Madison is an exceptional fifth grade student who demonstrates academic excellence and a dedicated daily work ethic. Madison shows great leadership skills when working with other students or when taking the initiative to help her teachers. Madison's positive attitude makes her an exceptional role model for her fellow students. She exemplifies kindness and empathy for her classmates and she is always willing to help others. Madison makes sure all students are included and wants the best for everyone. She has a heart of gold. Congratulations. Ms. Johnson, can you get me a picture?
I sure will.
All right, representing middle school tonight, we have from Crete Middle School, Ms. Camila Lopez Jackson. So let me read all the nice things that makes huge difference in life. All right, cooperation, work ethic, leadership, considerate to others, assisting others in need, outstanding attitude, and a positive role model for other students. Camila, who likes to be called Michaela, is being recognized for her outstanding contributions inside and outside of the classroom. As a positive role model, she sets high standards for her classmates by consistently demonstrating integrity, kindness, and responsibility. Michaela is a member of the National Junior Honor Society, which further reflects her academic excellence, commitment of service, and leadership potential. Congratulations. And then representing high school, our high school Student of the Month this month is Trey Nourceis. Okay, so Trey excels in cooperation and work ethic, leadership, community involvement, considerate to others, and assisting others in need, outstanding attitude, outstanding grades, positive role model for other students. Trey is a dedicated student at Covington High School. He is a well-rounded and kind student. He is mature, well-invested in his academic and extracurricular activities such as track and HOSA. He can be counted on and needs real direction to complete any task that he is given. And you were recommended by Ms. Angie Dope. And then the other recognition that I want to mention tonight. Yesterday at our principals meeting, we recognized our district-level winners of Teacher of the Year, Novice Teacher of the Year, our Student Choice Award, and Assistant Principal of the Year. And these ladies' picture is up on the board for you to review. But we would like to hopefully recognize them tonight as well. District-level Teachers of the Year, representing pre-K through four is Ms. Sarah Lynn from Austin P. Grades five through eight is Jennifer Lee from Brighton Middle School. And then our High School Teacher of the Year is Ms. Rachel Burke from Brighton High School. Then we had a new category this year that the state asked us to do, and that's novice teachers of the year. So new teachers who are doing outstanding things. And they, in order to be eligible, they had to be within, they had to be years or months of service, ten months to thirty months. So they basically have to be in like their second or third year of teaching. So these are new teachers that are doing great things. In pre-K through four, we have Ms. Charlotte Taylor from Austin P. Five through eight was Angel Ingram, Creseau Middle, who was just here. And then nine through twelve, we had Aubrey Brenner from Brighton High School. Our Student Choice Award, which as the name suggests, was selected by students, was Ms. Amanda Murphy at Loomford Elementary School. And our Assistant Principal of the Year this year goes to Ms. Margaret Alsbrook. So we want to say congratulations to all of those folks.
Thank you, Dr. Byrd. Board, if you'll go ahead and look at your consent agenda. There needs to be anything pulled out of there, just let me know and we'll pull it out. If not, we'll take a motion to approve it as is.
Can we pull out the policy five point one, one eight? I have even one question about that.
Yep, yep, all right. Yeah, let's go ahead, we'll go ahead. We're gonna pull out, we're gonna talk about five point one, one eight. All right, Mr. Richard, go ahead.
Just one question about the field trips from the consent agenda.
You gonna pull that out too, Mr. Gene?
Well, I just, I'm just gonna make sure the dates right. It's got three fifteen twenty six. They're applying for today, for approval today. It's a Brighton High School going to D.C. Just wanna make sure we got the right date.
Which one, the second one?
I think it's the second one.
Second one? The BHS, the second one?
They got three fifteen twenty six on that date. I just wanna make sure it's right there.
Probably twenty five, right.
We're looking it up, give us just a second, please.
Sometimes they do go way ahead because they have to reserve them that far ahead. But I don't know if that's one of those or not.
It could be one that they're having to raise money to go to. That could be what it is, but we're, I'm trying to find it. We're trying to get there. Tell me what organization it is.
Brighton High School, Bangin'.
It's, that is probably accurate. Sometimes if they're going, where did you say they're going?
Disney.
I'm sure it is. It takes them a while to raise that much money. I will confirm and send you that in an email, but I'm pretty sure that that's accurate.
Mr. Gray?
Only I had a question about it, it covers a lot of the abuse side of it. I noticed it says, "Poses an immediate threat to health, safety, or welfare." Just wanna see where the mindset is on that. What's considered health, safety, and welfare as an immediate threat that we wouldn't consider for employment?
What part, what line?
It's in the red, it's gonna be lines four and five at the end. I know it's just covering generic, you know, other convicted drug charges, gun charges, stuff like that outside the scope of the abuse side of it. It's completely covered.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may. That language is already in the policy and I moved it around just to match what TSB, to match their formatting. It just makes it easier for the next time we change it, if it kinda looks like theirs. And that verbiage came directly from them. My response would be that's probably a case-by-case basis. I don't know that we can define every situation. But if it's the will of the board, we could certainly add some more clarifying language. But the language did come directly from TSB.
Okay, that's what I'm, I was curious about. I appreciate that, Dr. Byrd.
Yes, sir.
Well, Dr. Byrd, is that referring back to the child neglect or who poses an immediate threat? Is that referring back to the Department of Children's Services who have identified that? Is that, is that how that reads? Is the Department of Children's Services identifies those people? So it's not us identifying that, correct?
It seems that way to me. The way I read it, yes, it does.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, it's, my understanding of that is that's not on us to make that identification. That's part of that background check, because it's a pretty thorough background check, more than just, you know, Department of Children's Services involved. So anything that would pose an immediate, I would think it'd be part of that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's actually, that's actually a good question, yeah.
But we don't make that determination. Department of Children's Services doesn't make that.
Correct, correct.
Absolutely, absolutely. So the ambiguity comes from them rather than us.
Right, and us. That's what I was trying to clarify, from us or them and what's defined in there.
Yep, no, good question.
And I'll, I mean, I'll give you an example of some of them that have happened in the past through HR. Like, let's say that a background check comes back and there's something that pops up on their record, like a DUI, right? But the DUI was like fifteen years ago in college or something like that. Then that would fall on us to say, okay, let's look at the context, how long ago that was, that everything's been great since then. Those kind of things would fall on us to make that decision. But as far as what's initially in any of that background check and all that, that's not us. No, that comes from the check.
Perfect.
Yeah, it was a good question.
Any other discussion, yes?
I do have a question on that when I was reading over it. Line twenty-eight, it says, "Background checks shall be required of these employees." Is it talking about the employees? These employees, is that like, I know when, you know, you're interviewed to come on board, you know, you have to go through the process to have a clean background check. Does that mean, these employees, what are these employees?
So, all of them. So when they're initially brought in, that, that is, that's part of that. But then like, for example, so, I don't even know if I wanna say this out loud. So I was, when I came on a billion years ago, right? I can't tell you when my last background check was until this law came into place. And then they said every five years, so you had to start getting, those of us, correct. We're on a five, every employee, all of us. I mean, I've gone, I had to go through mine. I mean, I had, we all had to do it.
So with the, with the new law, the change in red that you'll see, the folks at the bottom that it's talking about, the contractors and volunteers, they're still gonna do the every five years. But this new law now says that we, and we are doing this because we participated in the pilot, this rat-back program. The full-time employees that work for Tipton County Schools, not contractors and volunteers, but full-time employees, Tipton County Schools employees, we are put into this rat-back program now so that the five-year, every five-year is not required. And that's why this policy is changing, because the law changed. So now, when, once you get entered into this FBI's rat-back program, then if you get arrested or do something you're not supposed to do, then HR will be notified probably before the employee has a chance to self-report, which is required by board policy. So that, that's the change at the top. And these employees at the bottom is talking about contractors and policies. Yeah, okay, good. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions?
In part, I'm sorry, in part-time employees. We do not, currently, we are not putting them in the rat-back program because of the high turnover in part-time employees. It's not probably financially wise to do that. It's a fifty-dollar charge for every person that you enter into that rat-back program. So right now, part-time people are still doing the every-five-years background check.
Mr. Gill?
I was, I've been a volunteer for ten years and I went through the fingerprinting and all the fun stuff over there. I'm still wearing the same ID badge. Just kind of a thought, maybe expiration date on the ID badge.
That's a good idea. We have people watching you, though.
I know, I can tell.
Being procedure.
That's actually, that is a good idea.
Cause I, I know through helping my wife with her church stuff too, we have quite a bit of volunteers that'll come sign up. And so I know that we're doing that with volunteers. And so like, when's that expire out for them or are they still?
Mr. Gill, I'm a little bit disappointed in you, to be honest with you. You didn't ask a question that we thought you might ask. If anybody's asking what rap means, it is record of arrest and prosecution, okay? So just to clarify that. I jumped you, I beat you to it, okay?
I'm just using the hearing all the time.
So this is the one that... Exactly. All right, I'm just, any other questions regarding that, that policy? All right, if, if, if no other questions there, do we have, do we have a, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is? Ms. Hubanks has a motion. Second by Mr. McCann. All in favor of that motion? Say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Now I can get back to my agenda. Mr. Daughter?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
All right, I have one thing tonight, and that is your revenue and expenditure reports that you'll find in your packet. The one thing I will point out about the revenues in the 141 is you will see that B-12 shot for the property tax that generates in December. Of course, the next one being February. Other than that, all basically standard bills, so to speak. Chairman, that concludes my report. Unless there are any questions?
No, wait.
It's beautiful.
Yes.
Do you think it's about to start slower?
Yep, any other questions, Mr. Daughter? That's easy. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Byrd, structural report.
Okay, so in your online folder, I shared with you the schedule for Science textbook adoption caravan, which is February it did at Brighton Middle School. I also gave you a printed copy in the black folder that's on the table. But on this day, and we talked about this earlier when you guys were asking about textbook adoption, but this is when the district textbook adoption committee will hear from every state-approved vendor about the resources that they have available from each publisher. And we want to invite our board, any members who would like to, to come and observe the process that day if you would like. But it will be that morning, as the schedule indicates, the vendors will present. We do have one vendor that says they cannot make it and they want to do it virtually. So we're gonna try to set up a Zoom, but that's on the vendor. We've invited all of them that were state-approved to come. If they don't, again, that's on them. But you are invited to come and observe that. And then that afternoon, after the vendor presentations, they'll go to lunch, then they'll gather back here and start doing some deliberation and kinda talk about what's good and, you know, what's lacking from each vendor. But you're welcome to come to those if you would like to.
I have to throw this in too, just so, you repeat this so the folks on camera can hear it as well. The vendors who were invited were only the vendors that were on the state-approved list?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
I want everybody to know that.
Yes. Any other questions about textbook adoption? And the district committee, as you recall, teachers, administrators, parents. Oh, and just, I don't have this in my notes, but to make you aware, the samples that have been sent to the schools by each vendor on the state-approved list, they have those available at parent-teacher conferences for any parent who would like to go and peruse them. And we also have a copy of them at the Media Center in Brighton. And that information is on the website. The last thing I have is in your online folder in November, and I made you a printed copy. So you have that in front of you too. Tonight is the night I wanted to just briefly share with you our progress on Goal Three of the strategic plan. And so you can see the highlighted items are those things that we have either completed or are ongoing. We have some other things that we are continuing to work on. But those are the things that we have completed or, as I said, are ongoing. Are there any questions about these? I will say, when the strategic plan was written, drug-free Tipton was drug-free Tipton. We know that that now has changed to Tipton prevents. We have not updated that because we don't change the strategic plan until you all ask us to do so. But that's why that language is still there. Any questions about Goal Three? And I think our, our plan will be at the upcoming board retreat that we will look, will give you all the opportunity to make tweaks to that strategic plan, including, you know, the goals, the action steps, the vision, mission, the board statements, and all of that.
Does, Dr. Byrd, the established anti-bullying community initiatives and, is there a, I mean, other than the awareness sessions in churches and civic organizations, is there anything that's happening inside the school system as well from a, you know, awareness?
If I could yield to Mr. Fields on that question, that'd be more of his area.
Well, they have resources for the counselors. They bring in presenters during the year, especially at the beginning of the year. Social workers, they get involved to, for anti-bullying. So there are, there are a couple other things that they do.
Okay.
Is part of that, that training, the in-service training at the beginning, is there any of that? And there some bullying stuff in that with the suicide prevention and all that kinda stuff?
Well, I do those appliances.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Byrd to go through?
And that completes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Byrd. Chris Field?
Good afternoon. So in your package, you will find another revised copy of the unsportsmanlike plans as you requested. The parents, I've already, we presented each school with two large posters with their information on it. It will also be posted on our website. And that information will be acknowledged at the receipt during registration. We plan to recognize Skyler Smith at the next, next school board meeting. That's Mr. Football from Covington High School. I don't think, I think the rings are like five or six weeks out. But regardless if they're here or not, we're gonna recognize him at the February meeting. Just an update on SACC. We currently have two hundred and seventy-two students enrolled in the program, twenty-two on the waiting list at Otoka, two on the waiting list at AES, and nine at DES. So SACC is our, our school program. Can't think of a name of it.
School like shop.
School like shop here, where we keep the kids from three fifteen to six fifteen in afternoons. One thing I wanna bring up is, I get several calls during the year about cell phones. So I want you to know, if you get a call, if the principal takes up the phone, we can hold a phone up to nine weeks on the first take-up. But the principal's usually giving them back in two or three days. Now after that, for multiple offenses, we can, we can hold the phone for the, for the remainder of the year. We never do that, but the parents that call and say, hey, that's my phone, I paid for it. You're gonna get it back? We're doing it. I even had one parent call the police. So just in case you get the call, that is, that is policy. We currently have seventy-nine out-of-district students. If you get a chance, come out and, come out and support our basketball teams. We got, there's a lot of parity. There's a lot of, a lot of good games this year, even Brighton High School boys. I think they were ranked number eighteen in the state last, last week. So we're doing a good job. Report from transportation, we have twelve new buses so far this year. We're waiting on a delivery from, for one more. There are seventy-eight passenger buses. We're at a point now where we're fully staffed in the mechanic department. And our mechanics don't have to drive bus routes full-time anymore. So that's a great accomplishment for our bus department. We served over two hundred and ninety thousand meals for breakfast from August to December and five, over five hundred and twenty-four thousand lunches from August to December, first semester. So it's a pretty good job. This is by report. Any questions?
Thank you, Phil.
I do have one, have we had any fines yet? On the unsportsmanlike?
Two. Actually, four. We also had two coaches.
We had one, I didn't know.
We're probably gonna get plenty more. We'll get some.
And you said you were gonna post that, we're gonna post that next to the clearback policy at the events. Is that correct or this policy here?
I can, I asked them to. I just gave them the posters.
That's fine, okay. I'm just curious, we need to, I mean, how are we gonna get it in the parents' hands? We're gonna put it on Skyward or how's that?
It's gonna be on our web, actually, it's on our web.
It is?
Yeah, it's under the parents.
Okay, is it fairly, it is fairly easy to find, okay?
It's under the parents' tab, I mean, we can...
But something visible, I guess, at.
Yeah, and here's, here's...
And it'd be in the gyms also.
Yeah, and I mean, I can make this suggestion too. We can, we can push it out to our social media account, through Twitter and our Facebook account. We can, we can push it out from our social media and, and do a screenshot. Hey, just, you know, making sure everybody is aware, new policy.
Think clearly, all better.
Absolutely, yes.
First game I went to, it was, it was no doubt that what's implemented.
Okay, good.
Like I got told by five people before I met my seat. I said, why are y'all telling me?
So if it wasn't about you, you weren't in trouble.
Well, they were making me feel that.
It's also on my online registration.
Did you say this was gonna be part of registration every year too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, the only thing, I think it's a well-written policy. Do we know, and I know it's kinda new to us based on P double S double A, do we know how if it comes down, yeah, you can suspend somebody for the whole year if they're pulling it on a rule? But we're still left holding back on the money. Is there, do we know a way legally we can collect from the ejected parent? And two, do we know how we're gonna monitor suspended? You know, we're gonna put pictures up on walls or? It's, it's kinda early, but I was just curious.
Well, I've asked, the principals will email me the person that's ejected. So I don't know, and my assistant, Martin McClain, you know, and, and we're usually at most of the games. So if we see that person, you know, we'll, we'll deal with them.
Those don't wanna miss games, they're gonna have to pay it.
Hopefully.
As far as getting a two-fifty recoup, you know, Dr. Byrd was nice, we spoke about it. We possibly could talk to, talk to the attorneys. I don't know if we can press charges or...
It's a misdemeanor.
You know, by the time we pay the attorney to write a letter and do all that, we'll spend that much on the attorney. So the biggest, I think, the biggest bite in that policy is the suspension. I mean, it's like, no, you're not showing, and that information will go to law enforcement, it'll go to folks working the gate, I mean, they'll all...
And this, this may be, I don't know the civil side of it, but, you know, there are fees. And this, this may be, I don't know the civil side of it, but, you know, there are, there are fees, parents and, and guardians have to pay, if, say, the father is ejected, just using that, when fees come up, could that be included in fees?
I don't think so.
Don't think so? I was just curious, that could be.
But we gotta be careful with fees and fine, there, there's a lot of guidelines there, really, I mean, is that an accurate statement?
For fees, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be, that, that'd be hard, plus we wanna make sure that, I'm trying to say this correctly, we wanna make sure in a lot of cases that we don't hold the kid accountable for something my parent did, you know, or the fan did.
Absolutely.
So, wanna make sure that that tracked back to the child, either, so, uh, we need to handle that person as an adult, so, yeah.
I think the good thing about it, I mean, it's gonna be the same people, you know, it's kinda like students, it's, it was gonna be ten percent that's gonna affect the nine percent, uh, we, we also have to remember a, a person being ejected by an official versus the administration saying, hey, let's get, let's get John Holmes out of here, he might not be ejected by the official, but he's causing a ruckus, and they're still getting him off the premises. So that's, that's really not aligned with the two fifty fine.
Right.
But it would fall under our visitor code of conduct, you know, just acting up on, on school grounds, and we could deal with it that, that way, you know?
So the fine's only if the official throws them on, right?
Correct.
So the warning can be to administration, hey, this, and the officials know that they got that power, so.
Yes, sir.
That just gives us a little bit of meat or strength to get somebody out of it.
Absolutely, and I also, well, I also find it interesting that when T double S double A incorporated this procedure, right, they said, we're gonna find the school, you know, they didn't say, even though they're ejecting that person, they didn't say, we're gonna find that person, because they knew how hard it would be to collect, and they don't have, they aren't, so they, obviously, like everybody else does, they put it back on the school, no, you handle this, that's why the school's being fined, so the. That, and that's why, you know, I appreciate y'all being cool with this, because, I mean, we gotta do something, it's not the school's fault.
They made us our brother keeper.
But Mr. Matt, the, the official is gonna be cleared.
Sure.
I mean, he's gonna call for the resource officer or the administrator, and he's gonna point and say, James, that guy has to leave, so that's the official ejection, now you may have two fans in an argument in the stands, the official is not ejecting those people, security is just going to get those people, and then the principal can deal with them under our visitor code, which is, could, you know, the consequences could be just as bad, except for the two fifty. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Yep, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Fields, questions, Dr. Count?
Um, well, I'll just say, uh, so number eleven there, uh, you know, I, I sent y'all an email with an update, so you can see that, uh, Hunter is, uh, out of the state right now, so, uh, he, uh, asked Lincoln to send us some stuff, so I sent y'all that update, so you can see that, it looks like, you know, progress is going, we're still shooting for first semester next year for, you know, and it just, I'm telling you, we're all at, you know, I, I wish I could control the weather, but I can't, so, we're, you know, we're at the mercy of how that goes, but, you know, the goal and what Seymour and everybody are shooting for is still first semester next year, you know, now, when first semester, they're, they're rolling, and, you know, and remember, once they get that bad boy under roof, or those bad boys under roof, uh, they'll be nights, weekends, whatever, they'll be, they'll be cranking, but, you know,
Crazy scene.
The weather only, I know, right? Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, but it's, it's, it's going well, they're, they're, they're making good, they're making good progress there, um, and along those same lines, since I'm bringing that up, I would like to bring something before the board for, uh, y'all's consideration, so, uh, obviously, the chairman and I have spoken and, and, and tried to keep y'all on the loop on kinda where we are with insurance and that kinda thing, right? So, uh, the, uh, the, the insurance, um, their final number they gave us was, uh, short of what we think it should be, uh, and so we have shared that information with y'all, um, my request to the board would be, we have a work session coming up, uh, on the twenty eighth, twenty eighth, which is Tuesday, um, that's already going to be a closed session, because as you see on your agenda for that meeting, that is a security meeting, we're gonna have, uh, Brandon Matlock with Homeland Security here to talk about a few things with regard to, you know, kinda the, you know, the, the cyber threats and some of that kinda stuff we have going on, he's gonna be here to talk, Glenn will be here to answer a few questions with regard to security, but since that work session is already a closed meeting, because we're gonna be talking about safety and security, which obviously policy allows, um, I would like to suggest that you allow us to have the, uh, attorney here as well, our attorney, and, um, it would be a, uh, a client, um, board meeting, a, a client attorney privileged meeting, so it could still be closed, and we need to let him give us some, um, some updates and some advice on moving forward with where we are with insurance, uh, and since, again, the meeting, it really is kinda handy, that the meeting is already a closed meeting, and that would be a, a, a privileged meeting because it is, you know, a, attorney-client, and so, uh, that would be my request to the board, that, uh, you know, you give us, you know, grant us the ability to go ahead and talk to the, the, uh, attorney and ask him to be here to kinda give us some direction and next steps, maybe, on where we should go at, at this point, um, but I would need, you know, y'all to okay that.
We make a motion, that's okay. Yeah, that's fine, we'll do a motion.
We'll make a motion to.
Close meeting now.
Okay.
So we have the motion for closed meeting with our attorney, um, segmented by Mr. Uh, Mr. Lavelle, I'm sorry, I blanked out, I wanna say McCann, alright, so, uh, all in favor of that, or any discussion on that motion, everybody good with that, all in favor of that, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, so we'll have, we'll have Steve here and, uh.
Yes, sir. Uh, sir, six, six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, six o'clock, but Tuesday night.
Tuesday night?
Yes, sir, twenty eight, Tuesday night, more, more than likely, uh, we would have, uh, the security portion first, so, you know, Brandon would come and, and he and Glenn would talk about the stuff we already have lined up for safety, and then following that would probably be, uh, our attorney, or flip it either way, yeah, I think either way works because the whole meeting would be closed that way, so, uh, it doesn't, you know, that, I think that'd be okay, yeah. Sounds good, and we appreciate that, that, that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, uh, one other thing too, we were talking, we passed the second reading of the policy for the student representative, that student representative was here tonight, Mr. Trey Narcis, so, uh, he was, he was the last one, so, uh, he'll be joining us now that we pass that, he'll be joining us, uh, uh, on the, the panel here, uh,
He's a esteemed.
He's gonna be next to Mr. Bean, so he's taking the spot, uh, so he'll be with us, our goal is, is to, you know, to, to bring him around and, and show him around student government, what, what's government looks like and stuff, and so we're gonna include him in a lot of things as far as just showing him some things, and, uh, um, so, and looking forward to hearing, hearing from him and his, you know, colleagues on, if they've got anything to present to us, or, you know, any ideas that we're not thinking of, so, looking forward to that, so that's Mr. Narcis, so we'll see a lot of him, he is a great young man, so.
And this is, and this is groundbreaking for the board, so thank y'all, this is groundbreaking, this, we've never done that, and it's, and I do think, as has been brought up before, this is gonna open up the door, I think, for more opportunities similar and some communication there between the school, this is, that, that's really cool, I'm glad y'all are, this is me.
Yeah, great.
I'm excited.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jean.
Uh, we've gone, do they get some kinda credit? Or act like, you know, go in their file?
Well, put it this way, uh, it'll look really good and applicable. They'll, they'll, they'll have a, uh, probably, I'm sure, some kind of a certificate or something that we give them, and then, uh, of course, I'll be able to write them a letter of recommendation, I'm sure the board chair will do so as well, that'd be something really, really good on a college or job application.
Yeah.
Say that.
Any, any, thank you, any other items or anything, I know we didn't put anything else on the agenda, but anything else to bring up? Alright, do we have a motion to, to adjourn? Make a jump, motion, Mr. Avery, say the motion to Lavelle, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, hope not.